I'll call this meeting back into business. It is 7:13. With that being said, Dr. Proctor, can you verify the web form, sir?
Yes, sir, we did.
Fantastic. And this time, Dr. Donald Johnson, sir, are you present with us?
Yes, sir.
There you are. You'll come forward, sir, and provide the indication, please.
Absolutely. What an honor and a privilege it is to be alive and to be here and to be a citizen of Jasper, Georgia.
I totally agree with him.
Fine community, fine people, and I actually love being here. And I just want to acknowledge our honorable Kirk DeRaffield, our city managers, clerks, and all of our elected officials and to the fine citizens of this city. God is good. I just, you know, I have to start with a few verses from the Bible because prayer works and works according to God's word. "I exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving the thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty." Prayer works, and not only does prayer work, but prayer changes things. Let's pray. Father, in the magnificent, the mighty, the holy, the powerful, and eternal name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for the great privilege to be able to come boldly to your throne of grace, to obtain mercy and to find grace to help in times of need. We thank you because your faithfulness is great and your grace is sufficient for us. And now, Father, as we continue the convention of this city meeting, we know that your eyes are in every place beholding the evil and the good. We pray that everything will be done indecently and in order. And we do ask that your kingdom come and your will be done on earth in the city of Jasper as it is in heaven. We ask it in Jesus's name and for his sake. Amen.
Mr. London, would you like to please, sir?
Let your praises to the Father and the United States of America, in thy republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Council, you've got an agenda before you. At this time, I'll yield the floor for the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, if I could, can I make a suggestion? The item number... Oh, where is it? Somebody find the miller rate.
New business.
New business, number four. May I ask that it be moved to the front of the agenda? We have a lot of people here who have given us a lot of their time this evening, and I hate for them to sit through the rest of this agenda without getting an answer quickly.
Mr. Hannity, who made the motion, sir? Do you want to rescind your motion or do you amend your motion to include that?
I amend to include moving on to four on new business.
Awesome. I have a motion. I have a second. Second. Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, snap. Thank you, council. That being said, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to now new business item number four. At the top of the agenda, it is consideration approval of ordinance number 2024-27 for abnormal tax millage rate. Ms. Lindsay Williams, there you are. Ms. Lindsay, come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I can afford all to not present the staff recommended millage rate. And we've completed the third and final public hearing tonight. And we've heard the comments from the citizens and all parties affected. As the final decision is up to council, the recommendation is not something that staff takes lightly. We have been fortunate enough for the past three years to roll back the millage rate. However, based on increased costs, we cannot recommend a rollback this year. Staff is recommending a 1.5 mill increase from 5.221 to 6.721 for 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, at this time, I yield the floor for a motion in reference to number four ordinance, 2024-27 abnormal tax millage rate. Yield the floor.
Thank you all for your comments this evening. I do recognize the burden that this causes. I'd like to change or make a motion that rather than a 1.5 mill increase, that we change it to a 1-mill increase. And I apologize, it's still money, folks, but... It's time for us to do it.
Council, I have a motion to approve a 1-mill increase, which mill rate will be 6.221. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. In discussion, council?
Yes. To me, I feel like if we're going to be raising taxes, then we should be offering better services. And with this increase, we're not allowing, allocating any money for new staff. So what better services will we be receiving? You know, we're asking a lot of our citizens, our business owners, to carry this load when this decision has been from the council. I think everyone's stressed in as it is. We hear all the heartfalls that people have and, you know, talking to people today, hearing, you know, $16, $13 is a prescription that they might not be able to get that month. That weighs in on me. I feel that we're asking them to carry the load when the city has to have some skin in the game. I think that we can make some changes and carry that load for them.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion, council? No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So, a pose?
Aye.
Mr. Soffin, it appears that we have a tie, sir. In this case, charter dictates that the mayor may or shall vote.
When there's a tie, the charter dictates that the mayor can vote to break the tie.
Thank you, sir. As mentioned earlier in the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud that we have some life-saving recognition going on tonight. Our police department and fire department have both received increases in salaries over recent years to bring them up to what we consider a comparable livable wage. Our public works department has done the same. We have brought them up to a livable wage. Those range from 60% to 70% for frontline workers. Those are the individuals placing stop signs, potholes, saving you, riding in and angles with you, or keeping you safe. In light of that, what all of our employees do, I'm going to vote in favor of the 1-mill increase, and I vote aye. So that will pass three to two for 1-mill. Mill rate will be 6.221. Thank you, council. At this time, I have two proclamations. The first is a Surf Pickens proclamation. I'm going to keep this really short. The proclamation for Surf Pickens Day, whereas the third annual Surf Pickens Day, supported by several churches, civic groups, businesses, and many volunteers will be held Saturday, October 19th, 2024. Therefore, we the undersigned proclaim October 19th, 2024 as Surf Pickens Day in Pickens County and the city of Jasper and support the work of Surf Pickens and its volunteers and the nonprofits which they serve. This was executed and signed on the second day of October, 2024, by the mayor of Jasper. Mr. Stans will also sign on behalf of the county. The second proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week, which actually started October 6th and runs until October 12th, 2024, whereas the city of Jasper is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. Therefore, I, Kirk DeRaffield, the mayor of the city of Jasper, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city and urge all residents of Jasper to make sure in their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Jasper's fire department and all fire departments across the state of Georgia. This is ended. At this time, I'm going to call Joan Share, the fire chief of the Jasper Fire Department, forward, sir. Do you have life-saving words? Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
This is a highlight of our evening.
Tonight, we have two shifts, two groups of personnel we would like to recognize for saving lives in city Jasper. Before I start on that, though, I'd like to talk a little bit about fire service and some of the things we do and express my thanks to our personnel. I'd like to go ahead and bring them in there, a lot of them around the hallway.
Come on in, guys.
We're going to get y'all to come in. Come up front.
Come on up front.
Oh, come on.
They're all packed.
We have a couple of them that have to leave early. They've been put out for a little while while the hearings go on. They had some prior meetings they had to thank, so they're good to stay. They'll try to recognize them later today. How about y'all, everybody? Absolutely. And we've got Pickens County fire personnel, the city of Jasper fire personnel.
Come on up the middle.
We work as a team. We work together. And the reason I want to bring all of them up here together first is I want to thank every last one of you. Also, want to thank your families that are out here. Each and every one of you sacrifice just as they sacrifice. You have to leave them, not have them for 24 or 48 hours at a time in a lot of cases. There's countless hours of training that go into what they do. It's not just a show up and jump on the truck and go save people like you see on TV. It is a profession that takes training, years of experience, and time to develop. And they hone those skills for moments like these. It's not always successful, unfortunately. We get a lot of people that were not able to save, not because we didn't do what needed to be done, not because we didn't try hard enough, but because just life wasn't savable, unfortunately. But they give it their all every time, regardless. We have tried countlessly, both organizations, to improve our skill sets, the ability of our people, what we're able to do to deliver a higher level of servicing. Unfortunately, these two instances, we were able to successfully save lives against the odds in both cases, might I add. I will go ahead and get started and get off my soapbox about fire service, which we tell are very passionate about it. We have two separate incidents. The first incident was back in July, July 13th. Crews responded to a witness cardiac arrest in our downtown Main Street area. Fortunately, I want to mention, we don't have the person's name, but somebody was there and started CPR immediately. If you're not CPR certified, please reach out to us. We'd love to get you certified. First link is early CPR, first link is survival. But crews got there from Jasper Fire immediately, just a moment or two after, a little minute or two, initiated life-saving efforts. Medical crew arrived as well, took over, offered that advanced life support. They worked together as a team, were able to successfully save this woman that suffered this medical emergency. And today, she is walking among us, thankfully. So the first award I want to give, and I will get, she'll come right around here and she'll hand them out, is Javon Morris, Pickens County Fire. And we'll give them all a round of applause at the end. I probably should have read the citation first, I apologize for that. Says, "In recognition of your performance on the scene of a medical emergency where your efforts resulted in the patient's life being saved on July 13th, 2024, your actions exemplify the professionalism and performance standards of the city of Jasper Fire Department." Parabola. Zach LaConne. Firefighter Jason Long. Sergeant David Watworth. Lieutenant Jordan Berger. We're going to move on to our next one. Our next incident took place on August 19th, 2024. This is a little more complex. We had a confined space rescue in the city of Jasper where somebody found themselves in the bottom of a manhole. And they were down there, our crews arrived, they were unresponsive and not breathing. They were able to quickly execute that for rescue, remove the victim from manhole where the medical crew was standing by, ready to go, ready to work. And those two teams, two groups working as a team, were able to save this man's life. Both had to be there and ready to perform at the same time. Without the actions of either part, the man would not be alive today, and we're thankful that he is. I'll read the citation now. "In recognition of your performance on the scene of a technical rescue incident where your efforts resulted in the patient's life being saved on August 19th, 2024, your actions exemplify professionalism and performance standards of the city of Jasper Fire Department." I'd like to present this first award to Italian Chief Shane Godfrey. Firefighter Mason Woodard. Parabola to Zach Robinson. Firefighter Dallas McHale. Firefighter Dustin Low. And Sergeant Kevin Dunn. Again, I'd like to thank you all and your families for what you do. We could not do this without you. We could not be as safe and convenient as we are today. And without your fearless devotion and dedication, oh. Thank you all very much. Thank you for allowing us to do this. We've got some work we have to do. Time is waiting, yeah. Thank you all.
All right. Mr. Douglas, do you have all the staff? Do you have all the staff?
All staff, yes.
All right, council, city manager, Mr. Soffin, at this time. Next on the agenda is the public hearing. Under unfinished business, I'm going to call the public hearing. For item number one, request for variance for a partial utilized metal accent exceeding 10% maximum allowance for the building facade provided at zoning ordinance 94-96 C1C. Is anyone here wishing to speak on that?
I'm not sure Mr. Taylor is here. It does not appear that Mr. Taylor, the applicant, is here this evening.
Would you like to go ahead and present your piece?
I certainly can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, here is the Burgess Development Director. This evening, we have a request made by Nick Taylor on behalf of Blue Star Enterprises for a 294 each East Church Street for a variance from section 9496 commercial standards. And it is for a to do over the maximum 10% allowance for metal as a building facade accent. So just a little refresher on where we are. This is obviously tractor supply. It's situated on just over four acres. It is Zone C2 or general commercial district. It has city water and sewer. It has approximately 275 feet of frontage along East Church Street, and it is a retail supply store. So its surrounding area is, you have Regions Bank to the north, Cato Feodor Home to the east, west is CBS, and then the south is a vacant property. So when asking for a variance, you'll know that there are five criteria. You must meet all five criteria for, to meet the circumstances to grant the variance. This applicant is asking for approximately 40% of this candle lever portion to be part of the galvalume five-ridged aluminum-based galvanized siding. And then, as recalled, the section calls for a maximum of 10% metal as the accent per ordinance. They did provide an engineer's letter where it does stipulate that the existing cedar shingles are no longer made. This type is a mini cedar shake. They are no longer made, but the cedar shake itself is actually still made. First and foremost, from this engineered letter, it does says the permanent structural repair approach is needed for this steep roof and awning. So first and foremost, the candle lever portion is not structurally sound enough to hold anything heavier than the galvalume five-ridged siding that they are proposing. Also, this five-ribbed roofing siding is very durable and economical. During the planning commission meeting, it was asked if they had any alternatives, and they did not provide any alternatives as this was the only one that they were seeking. That being said, this building is over 41 years old, and because of the lightweight, the lightweight use of that galvalume five-ribbed roofing on siding, that is why they're proposing that because it does, the candle lever portion does need to be replaced regardless. But with this lighter, economically durable metal siding is what they are preferring to use. So as, as we go through those five areas that must, the criteria that must be met in order to meet the granted a variance, is there an extraordinary exceptional conditions related to size, shape, or topography? As you know, the tractor supply is basically on a square block. It is flat, and there's nothing extraordinary that would prevent that size, shape, or topography that would prevent them from meeting the metal accent requirement. The application of the ordinance to this particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship. Again, there are alternatives, and the existing cedar shake, although as stated before, the mini cedar shake, going to say some bad words if I keep saying it, that has... It is expensive, I will say that. But this seems, this is a cosmetic upgrade and the existing, to the existing building. And in light of the utilization of the metal despite being other reasonable alternatives, it is that this would be not constitute as an unnecessary hardship. Are these conditions peculiar to this piece of property involved? No, there are no conditions peculiar to this property that would make them need to go exceed the 10% per regulations. Such conditions are not a result of the actions of the property owner. Again, this is a cosmetic choice, and therefore, this is a self-imposed hardship by choosing this to have the 40% versus the 10% accent. Then again, on the fifth, if granted, would cause substantial detriment to the public good or impair the purposes of the intent. The intent is to make sure that these design guidelines are met at the 10%. This, we do not feel the 40% would be in concert with the regulation or the intent of the ordinance. So we do not feel that has been met. As I stated before, all five of these criteria need to be met in order to grant variance. So staff recommendation as well as the planning commission recommendation is for denial as they did not meet the criteria to grant variance.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, as public hearing on the unfinished business.
Question? Right now, or you want to wait till...
Do you want to ask our check for it?
Yeah, the unnecessary hardship. Stated that the awning vary old weight and so forth. So if they needed to go with something heavier, are they going to have to redo the entire awning and that structural work?
And these are some of the questions that the planning commission also did bring up, and they were not able to provide something. So that when I, when I stated in their structural letter, they said, first and foremost, this needs to be, it needs to be repaired. So the candle lever itself needs to be structurally repaired. And so by putting on something heavier, yeah, it cannot support it. But the cedar shake is still available. So it's just, it's bigger. You see, those are mini, the dental, it's called dental cedar shake, and they don't make those anymore.
Would that cause a financial hardship on those included in that?
So financial hardships are not a consideration for variance. When you think of a variance, you think of, like, going back to soil shape and topography. When you go to financial aspects, say you have a boulder in the middle of your yard, and you can't meet that setback because said boulder is there. That would be something related to, say, soil shape and topography. And removing said boulder would be a financial hardship. So in terms of financial hardship, that would be one of those criterias. But wherever you can't meet all five of them, they just changed the zoning procedure law where you could do, I think that was like four or five years ago, you could do like two out of three. But now they made it so all the criteria have to be met. So it's really difficult to have the variance criteria in that. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions?
So from an aesthetic value, that doesn't add into the variance process either, but it's more aesthetically pleasing to have a red metal siding?
Unfortunately, no.
From staff's perspective?
Well, it would, it's more going over the 10%, which is the intent of the ordinance. And so aesthetically or not, we don't take that into consideration.
But it still could be approved, right? Even though staff's recommendation is denial, if council votes on it, it can...
Of course, of course. And then we just worry about setting a precedent.
Is that something that the ordinance that might need to be looked at?
So this was, I believe, done in '22, '23? It was when you guys changed it. It was, I think, at 25% at one point, and then it got down to 10%.
And I'm asking that for...
Certainly, this could be something that...
I know we've done a lot of changes, and there's some other ones that I think we've talked about looking at. So as long as that's...
Definitely, definitely. If, you know, and one good indication of when you need to change an ordinance is if you have several people asking for variance for the same thing. That's when the ordinance has become ineffective.
So would you want to, would you want to allow more metal or less metal based on our historical? Just, I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, I know that awnings have been an issue. And I'm not saying more or less. I'm not saying just this one. I'm just saying all around, it's been an issue that might, I'm not saying change that particular. I'm just saying that might be something we need to go back and look at for then.
I think just communicating more to people, you know, and toughen up for small business owners and then to cash out or activate.
And we don't know them all, so we're asking that question for reasons.
I've created a lot of money to update something for, to me, 30%.
And he's not here for it.
No, nobody's.
Somebody's not here.
Historically, we have, we paid a lot of attention to aesthetic appearances for downtown and pass some ordinances to protect the appearances. And if we're gonna change direction, then that's fine, that we do that. But I don't necessarily view this one as being an awning, quite honestly, more. Game of wood for it. There has been a lot of strong pushback from members of the council about the percentage of metal that are used on buildings. There's been a tremendous amount of pushback from our community and our citizens about using metal. And unfortunately, we're not all here, so we can't speak for John, but that's just some of the past discussions we've had.
Yeah, I thought Tom was asking, in the future, did we want to maybe go back and look at that?
With the awnings, I think?
That's not else, but I'm kinda like, yeah, but it's kind of more.
And that, most of, most of the, most of the ordinances around making our downtown preserve the historical perspective, I think it's also in our comprehensive plan or around the central business district. And I don't think this counts as the central business district.
No, but the metal awnings is something that you and I have discussed with downtown area, and that is one of the things, especially if the awning is going to be used for signage, that's one of the things that we're looking into while we're updating our text and things and stuff. If you guys have some recommendations on things that we've seen that may be a little bit of a tune-up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything further for staff, counsel? Thank you. Well, is that subject here? And move on to the next public hearing, any questions?
You need to ask if anyone wants to speak, favor, or just?
Oh, I thought it was House heard. Okay. Anyone want to speak tonight?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. And this is on the public hearing, unfinished business.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here watching. This is kind of going back to what I said earlier and earlier, but I'm not even sure that's an awning, maybe approved, but this is where I think common sense has to prevail over, I'm not a tin can thing. I hate just metal building. But in this case here, something's gotta, I mean, it's a long process to what I see and I saw right now, being tried to be made better. You go 300 yards down the street, I've got copper, I don't know if you call it an awning or a roof over the VA, but I've got a 225-foot, like 10-foot front walkway, because copper probably won't, well, I think, of course, it's one of the better, but the building's on that strip, but I think this is exactly what I'm talking about. It's kind of where it is, when, this isn't built, to me, you're making that look like, it's a feed store. It's a place we go buy stuff for, I'm there four times a week, or unless they bust me out like Tuesday where I may not deliver it to the farm, but this is common sense stuff that I think we're just getting too restrictive on. That's my only comment. I get the downtown area, I think it looks beautiful with lights and what you're doing there, but some of this other stuff is just too restrictive for us. When we start looking at some of these dilapidated buildings that are on the outskirts, that's what we worry about now, is how, how can we revitalize some of this in a financially smart way and still be able to amend it or offer it to new businesses or new people, or even people that are already here that are expanding, because some businesses are doing well, without some of this restrictive governance? That's my only thing. This is a no-brainer to me, what he's doing to make that building look better. In fact, it's probably a safety issue right now with stuff, but that's my only comment is we gotta make it to where we all get along. I understand completely what you guys are doing, public safety, the looks of the town and everything, but some of us just got to a point where, you know, we just throw our hands up, like, I don't even know if I'm wasting a month on trying to do something, because when I read through the ordinances in the back, someone told me last week, and I think maybe just a rumor, that now it's, all four sides have to be brick or something on the building. I'm not sure if that's true, I haven't looked yet, but that's my only thing, is if we could just come up with some of this stuff that doesn't have to go through these massive here and just put a roof on it, like it's not just an awning, that's an awning on that building there. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak on that? All right, I'm gonna close that public hearing. All right, a new public hearing, new business number one, request for special use permit for an applicant. Dana Holt on behalf of Michael R. and Rebecca L. Jenkins, the owners of approximately .8 acres, is on C2, located at 10 Mountain City Drive, for a special use permit to allow manufacturing establishment involving mechanical, chemical, and materials of a semi-finished or finished product millwork for furniture manufacturing. Ms. Mary Burgess, or Ms. Ella?
Yes, Elizabeth Burgess, City Planner. So the next one that we have for you is a request by applicant Dana Holt on behalf of Michael and Rebecca Jenkins for a special use permit to allow for mechanical or chemical conversion of raw materials into finished or semi-finished products. And the subject property is located at that 10 Mountain City Drive. And just before I begin, the applicant, Ms. Holt, is sick, so she was unable to attend tonight, but we did speak with her before the hearing and just confirmed that she's comfortable with us presenting and agreeable with our recommendation and proposed stipulations. So the subject property is located just southeast of the Walmart on the west side of the Mountain City Business Park. It is in C2 General Commercial, is approximately eight tenths of an acre in size. It has rented on both Old Philadelphia Road and Mountain City Drive, and it is improved within approximately 5,000 square foot office and warehouse building that is currently connected to city water and sewer. So the applicant, so just to provide a bit more context on the surrounding uses, the subject property is surrounded entirely by commercial zoning. We have commercial retail centers to the north and west, and other similar office and warehouse buildings to the east and south. So the applicant, Ms. Holt, is the president and CEO of Infinite Hospitality Resources, which manufactures commercial restaurant furniture for a restaurant group out of Kentucky. Her business is currently based in Talking Rock, but she's looking to expand her operations into the city of Jasper to accommodate increased demand as well as to be more approximate to the regional transportation network. The business is a business-to-business company, so the facility will not be open to the public, and the standard hours of operation will be between 8:00 and 6:00, Monday through Friday. And the team at this facility will also travel out of state fairly extensively for furniture installations. So in the C2 zoning district, manufacturing of finished or semi-finished products from raw materials, such as creating furniture from wood, does require a special use permit, hence the request we have before you this evening. And then just one item I quickly wanted to touch on is that the applicant is not proposing any staining or chemical finishing at this facility. It will just be limited to the millwork component. So when we evaluate a special use permit request, we look to the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan, which designates the subject property as part of the Jasper arterial commercial corridor. This corridor promotes the free and efficient movement of goods in traffic. So in consideration of the predominantly commercial land use context of the area, as well as the minimal traffic that would be generated by this private facility, staff does believe that this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to stipulations. The first being that this special use is limited to the, again, the millwork component of the commercial furniture manufacturing. And the second stipulation being that no staining or chemical finishing shall occur without city approval. And then the remaining stipulations are largely boilerplate stipulations, just related to screening of storage, restriking the parking lot, business licensure and signage. And then the final stipulation we have is just an acknowledgement of the ongoing temporary suspension. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Staff, you did speak, so you spoke with the applicant?
Yes, yes.
And agreed with the recommendation and the conditions?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Just curious, you know how many employees are bringing on over here?
I think less than 10.
Anything further, counsel? Anyone else here wish to speak on this item? Thank you, ma'am. I'll close that public hearing. Counsel, the next item on your agenda is the consideration, yield the floor.
My motion to approve a consent agenda is distributed.
And a motion, ma'am, second?
Second.
Motion's taken, discussion, counsel? Call in favor?
Aye.
Post, sir? Thank you, counsel. Unfinished, unfinished business number one, consideration approval of Pinnacle Hall Holdings LLC, agreement, Mary Burgess, honey and development director. Please, counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. As you are aware, Mr. Siphon and I have been working diligently to reconcile the situation with Pinnacle Hall Homes, and I believe we are there. Are we there?
We're there.
Here goes, how about?
I would like to note that Ms. Burgess and her department did work with the applicant and worked over the course of several months. Both could allow the applicant to continue to operate and also come in to comply with what our ordinance requires. So I just want to say this is a good example of how the city has worked with someone where they were still able to operate, still able to have their business, and yet we were successful for us and for them to have them come in to comply with the city's work. So just wanted to note that in light of some broader comments.
Thank you, sir.
Do you agree with Ms. Burgess?
No, I don't know, I think this is gonna be a great project, and I look forward to seeing the results. Everything looks really great on paper, so I think it is definitely gonna be a turnaround for this, this property.
Good, thank you, ma'am. Counsel, on this item, an action requested from staff is recommended approval, yield the floor for a motion. Salute. Motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion's taken, discussion?
Congratulations, I'm calling this from Burgess. I know this was a struggle.
Any further discussion, counsel? Call in favor?
Aye.
Post, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, consideration of ordinance 2024-22 for the request of a special use permit, 11-unit cottage housing development, Z vo, Grandview Road. This was continued from 9/9/2024 at a council meeting. I do not see the applicant here. Counsel, Ms. Burgess, do you see the applicant present?
Sorry, Nina. No, I do not.
Counsel, you have the ability to approve, deny, and/or table. The applicant is not present, I yield the floor.
Assuming applicant is still interested in this, this couldn't be here?
I haven't heard anything contrary to that. There has been no request for a withdrawal or additional information at this time.
Mr. Mayor, counsel?
It would be our recommendation to table in light of just giving the applicant the opportunity to attend a bit of a fourth meeting, whereupon we can continue the conversation.
Staff's recommendation is table. Counsel, yield the floor.
Move table.
I'm second.
Motion's taken, any discussion, counsel?
Counsel, I've had some conversations with these folks, and I've also done some research on my own on their proposal, including their sewer system, and also some of Mr. Siphon's aid. We've done some evaluations on the use by right, density on that. I'd be glad to discuss that with any of y'all prior to our next meeting, and send them to table.
Any further discussion, counsel? Call in favor?
Aye.
Post, sir? Counsel. Moving on to new business number one, consideration of ordinance 2024-25 for a request for variance to utilize metal accents exceeding the 10% maximum allowance for the building facade provided in zoning ordinance, Section 94-96C1C. Ms. Burgess?
As we previously just discussed, the variance request to go over the 10% building facade metal accent ordinance, not to be confused with an awning, this is just the metal accent for the building. As it did not meet the criteria for variance, staff has no choice but to recommend denial. Planning commission also recommended denial of this item.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you yield the floor for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve of variance.
And a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's taken, any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Siphon, can you address whether or not this truly sets a precedent for future situations like this in regards specifically to the 10% accent?
The problem, the position of the case is that each variance is dependent upon a case-by-case analysis of the factors that allow for the grant of a variance. And so I would argue that each case is a standalone case that from a factual viewpoint does not create a precedent, a legal precedent where you would have to grant a variance in the future. Now, to the extent that you make the determination and the legislative discretion of counsel that the variance factors are made, once you grant a variance, then the public could perceive that it's possible to be granted a variance, and you could get more applications for a variance. But if you decide to grant the variance, I do not feel that it binds you in the future to granting another variance, because each one would sort of stand on its own specific facts as to whether the factors under the ordinance have been met. So it's not a binding precedent where you're automatically going to grant it in the future. It may cause more variance requests if you grant it here.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind counsel as well, as for the benefit of the public, that in the last four or five years, we've been through many of our planning and zoning ordinances twice with the aid of CPL Engineering Firm. Each of those times, there was an extensive evaluation and recommendation process that went before the public and public hearings as well as the council. And each and every one of these ordinances were approved by council. That's not to say that they can't be changed. As a matter of fact, we've had some changes in a couple of those, but again, they did get through a process by which law was established, and it's our obligation to either follow the law or change the law. And of course, these variances allow for some discretion. So, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
To recommend if we could table this until, to see if he would be at the next one, because it's different than the other one, so we could hear from the owner.
The motions.
So a motion on the second?
Motion's taken, we're in the discussion phase. Any further discussion, counsel? Motion was made by Mr. Hans, seconded by Dr. Proctor, discussion was had, this is for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'd like, I would like to have him come in. It's a variance. I'm voting in favor.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Pass this full approval. Item number two, under new business, consideration of ordinance 2024-25 for a request for Item number two, under new business, consideration of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash two-six for a request for special use permit, and this is in reference to ten Mountain City Drive, for special use permit to allow manufacturing establishment involving mechanical or chemical conversion of raw materials into semi-finished or finished products. Ellie?
I think, Mayor, counsel, as presented, this is a request for a special use permit to allow for a commercial furniture manufacturing facility at ten Mountain City Drive. Staff is recommending approval, subject to stipulations, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and the applicant is in agreement with the stipulations as proposed by staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
Motion we approve.
Now for motion, we have a say?
Second.
Motion taken, any discussion, counsel?
I'd like to remind counsel, our special use frameworks were established by Mr. Siphon in his first tenure here, where we learned that, you know, we did not have, we just technically do not have any special manufacturing areas, we cannot allow these under certain circumstances, so thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Posta? Thank you, counsel. Item number three, under new business, consideration approval of alcohol license for Made With Love Soul Food, Mr. Graham Dixon, located twenty-seven Burt Mountain Road, Jasper, Georgia, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Ms. Dixon here with us, with Made With Love Soul Food, who has made application for beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises license, at twenty-seven Burt Mountain Road. The applicant has met all the requirements, and the background check had no discrepancy, so staff is requesting approval of his alcohol license.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you'll refer a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to have a say?
Second.
Motion taken, discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Posta? Thank you, counsel. Item number four was handled previously in the meeting, at this time we'll move on into committee report objects, first listed is developed local infrastructure, I have Dr. Proctor and Mr. Fast. Dr. Proctor, I think it's three, sir.
I'll let you through.
If you don't have an update, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, man. Things continue in progress at, uh, votes, and, and some of the outline, uh, stores that are coming in there, we are in a, a high interest right now as far as any advancement in that, for the most part, involves situations concerning our natural resources, water and sewer, and that's really about all we have in this town.
Yes, sir. Item administration, Mr. Louie has standards?
Uh, nothing new to report, thank you for action on the mail-in trade, budget preparation will begin, and we'll be meeting on that.
Any things to add? In the press committee, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Louie.
Work continues on the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. Nothing, nothing really to report on, except it is progressing, would love to have seen it progress quicker, but it is what it is.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to add that we do continue to work directly with EPD on evaluating and achieving solutions for our natural resource challenges, and also I'd like to thank the Lord for, unfortunately, our neighbors got ill effects of the hurricane, but we were in a precipitous situation, and it went east of us at a very critical time, and I think we got nine is right, so at least it did help alleviate some of the drought conditions, so.
Thank you, sir. Parks and properties, Mr. Hand?
Yeah, so, nothing new to report, other than last week, while grabbing lunch, we met with a business owner and had a conversation about Peace Park, and feel like there's some opportunity there, and it's funny when things come together, so I have volunteers coming to help, if you want to come out, volunteer their time and, and help the city with, with some work over there, so there's some opportunity when John gets back from restoring power to South Georgia, I've scheduled time with the city manager, Brandon Douglas, to go over there and see what opportunities we have.
Thank you, sir. Public sector, Mr. Hand, has a?
It's a great job, it's always great to recognize our fire department, and love being able to see them come up here and set rewards, and get a little public recognition, recognition. They also just went down to South Georgia to deliver some goods to our neighbors in Fitzgerald, so thank you guys for delivering those goods and all the work that you do here.
Mr. Douglas, I'll ask for an update from the city manager's office in reference to Cove Road, if you'll touch base on what you discussed earlier, the information that you received prior to your walk in this meeting?
Yes, sir. So there had been some, I guess, preliminary concern about the integrity of the rocks at the top of the S-curve, as such, we had a GDOT, the Office of Office and Management and Safety geologist come out, look, said there was no immediate concern, provided us with a reference with whom we've worked with before, so they came in and root and concurred with the GDOT rep, there's no immediate concern, however, we would need to, you know, look at solutions possibly, and so we received this two-cost, and it is option one, anchor high tension steel mesh, the design and mobilizations twenty-nine thousand three hundred, the scaling Prybar's airbag compressor system sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, anchored mesh includes up to one hundred and twenty grounded anchors with matting, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one hundred, for a total of four sixteen two two five. Option two, draped mesh with spot anchors of large boulders, design and mobilization twenty-four thousand four hundred, scaling not sixty-six thousand eight twenty-five, spot bolting, one hundred two thousand, draped steel mesh, seventy-six thousand five oh five, for a total of two sixty-nine seven thirty. As Mayor alluded, we've received that just before our five-thirty public hearing, we've not had a chance to look at it, however, as had been expressed to you all and to the public, there were no identified monies for budgeted to deal with anything of this magnitude. So as was done in twenty nineteen, we utilized fund balance to pay the ninety-five thousand at the time, so we'll have to confer with them to determine if this is something that clearly they feel as though we didn't do option one, option two. Some of this could be predicated on if we were to get some sort of emergency funding, since the state was under a state emergency, I do not know if it would elevate to that status, so at this point, we need to evaluate it and then get back with you all to determine what we need to do, but just for full disclosure, anything that we do, we'll have to come out of fund balance.
Thanks, sir.
And in the meantime, we're, we're good with the blockades, that we're good, correct?
Based upon the two qualified opinions, we feel very comfortable at staff level that those measures put in place were as good as we could do, and we're much better than what we were there to begin with.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So new business, on the agenda is executive session next, for the purpose of legal and real estate, I'll give the floor for a motion to go in executive session. Discussion, I have a say. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Posta? Thank you, counsel. We are in executive session, thank you.